City Commission Workshop on, and Budget Update. Before we move into the prepared presentation from staff, we will allow for speakers to speak for three minutes on items that are on the agenda. If there are folks who have items that are not on the agenda, we'll hear from you at the City Commission meeting, because there's no other place for that. So we'll begin with public speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four speakers this afternoon. The first is Stanley Sims, followed by Linda Nelson. As the mayor indicated, each speaker will have three minutes. The microphone's there in the center of the room, and I'll let you know when your time's running out.
Thank you. I'm here today for, and I'm on page, can you not start my time until I get to the page where it says FY outside funding direct update? I'm here today because commissioners, it's one thing to be denied funding, but there's another thing to act as if you never asked for funding. A part of the denial of further reason for my program was saying it should be referred to the CHSP process. Apart of going to that process, my good friend and alumnus from FAMU High, Ms. Secret Blood, True Blood Green, will come to you and say, hey, this is the amount that was requested, but this is the amount we had. If you notice, there are some exceptions to the rule, such as Crime Stoppers. That was the incident when the Crime Stoppers came before you without a budget and got $50,000, with over half of it being marketing. But because members of their board were former partners of Ms. Nancy Miller, that was approved, and that's why there's a zero in that column. So if you're gonna list agencies in there that requested money and didn't, I think that is unfair to me in a means of transparency not to say, because it creates that illusion that I don't exist. The unfortunate thing in this here process is the wall that has been built. Yesterday, Commissioner Richardson, I had the unduly thing, and Mayor, what if this was your wife? On the 23rd of this month, we'll be celebrating 24 years of marriage. But when I forgot my money and had to come up here and get it, I had to get authorization from security for my wife to come down and bring me some money. And then we look at leadership. I've been knowing my good friend Cynthia Barber over 45 years, and now there's an executive order from the interim manager that she can't even speak to me. That hurts. And we understand now, when President Wal- 45 says, build that wall, and we're gonna get Mexico to pay for it, because there are beer gardens all over South Side. It's one right now in that big old open pasture on Tuesday where people come for food. It's some right there on the corner of Blairstone and Park where-
Thirty seconds.
-people beg for food. There's a beer garden over there on Tennessee Street where if you look over on the corner where homeless people come out, those are beer gardens. And I'm just so surprised that my good friend, Ready For Work, who is doing such an awesome job, did not get more money, even though we're still number one with crime. I'm very disappointed that these organizations got the same level of funding when they are having to do with a greater amount of problems. But our greater funding, Mayor, is going to-
That's three minutes.
...law enforcement and infrastructure. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We're gonna go to Lucretia Shell Collins.
I waived my time in support of the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Melissa Stoller with the Tallahassee Trust, and she has some materials that I'll bring to each of you as she approaches.
Thank you, Jim. Good afternoon. I'm also here to speak in regard to the review of outside agency funding, and it appeared that at the last budget meeting workshop, there was a lack of understanding in regard to our historic preservation program and our certified local government program and the services that the Tallahassee Trust provides. So I have provided these materials on multiple occasions, but I felt it was important that everybody have an opportunity to read through that in case you had not received it. Otherwise, my remarks are fairly brief. I would just like to say that the need to preserve our historic-built environment is very widely acknowledged. There are many studies, some of which I've provided to you today, that have demonstrated that the preservation of historic buildings benefits our communities environmentally and socially, enhances sense of place, and importantly, serves as an economic driver. Historic preservation activities in Florida, such as the rehabilitation of historic buildings and heritage tourism, among others, contribute some $6.3 billion annually to the state. These impacts include job creation, income to Florida residents, increase in the gross state product, and increased in-state wealth. This information is readily available through the Florida Department of State, Division of Historical Resources, and historic preservation activities provide real economic value to communities. So my hope is that through the information I've provided throughout the recent review process, that you now have a more informed understanding of the city of Tallahassee's status as a certified local government and what it means to be a certified local government, that you have a better understanding of the services that the Tallahassee Trust for historic preservation provides directly to the city of Tallahassee, and that through some of the materials I provided today, that you'll have a better understanding of the economic value of historic preservation activities. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Linda Nelson. And Mayor, that's the last speaker form that I have for this meeting.
Hello, everyone, and of course, I'm not Linda Nelson. But Ms. Nelson is here, and she is chairman of the board. And we'll just take a couple of minutes just to say to you, thank you for what you've already done with us and for us, and we are indeed requesting funding again this year. You have a report before you, I won't go into it. The report certainly indicates that we were doing everything we said we would do in terms of getting more public awareness about what we do. We have indeed enhanced our rewards for a minimum of 500 to 5,000, and we are well on our way about to have that Unite the Fight Week that we spoke to you about, which is really a fugitive roundup. We want to simply continue to do what we do. We are here for one purpose and one purpose only, and that is to assist our law enforcement who can't do the job alone of getting criminals off the street. That is the sole and only purpose of Crime Stoppers, and we just need work, more assistance to do it. We're a small organization with a very small budget, and we truly believe that with additional funding, we indeed can increase the tips, and the tips yield the results of getting criminals off the street. Often criminals are, have warrants out for more than one act, and often they also go on to commit additional crime. Crime Stoppers is your partner in your overall comprehensive strategy of reducing crime. We help reduce crime in very, very direct ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That's the last speaker, Mayor.
Final speaker. All right. Thank you all for your public testimony. We're now at item 3.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is the sixth budget meeting of this year. You've made a commitment a couple of years ago to make sure we have frequent updates about the budget. We update regarding the budget period we're in, as well as discuss the future budgets, and that's the point of today's meeting. We'll provide a third quarter update, so in other words, how we're doing so far this year. The results are good. We'll also provide an overview of the five-year capital improvement plan. That's important. Some discussion of outside agency funding, you heard about that from the commenters earlier, and then some recommended mid-year adjustments. We've been making these adjustments mid-year so we don't wait till the end of the year and make sure we do it in a timely manner and reflect activities in the operation. Robert Wigan, our Director of Financial Management, is here. He's joined by the Assistant City Managers to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, and appointed officials, thank you for your time this afternoon. This afternoon, we'll discuss the fiscal year '18 budget. As the City Manager mentioned, we'll provide some amendments that we're recommending to keep that budget up to date, to ensure that it's a balanced budget as we move into the fourth quarter, and then provide the latest details that we have for the fiscal year '19 budget as we go into the break. With your leadership and direction, we are providing frequent updates, discussing the most relevant topics, using the most up-to-date information, and it's all in an effort to be efficient and effective and current. This is, as the City Manager mentioned, it's their sixth opportunity to discuss the budget, ranging from our closeout to our first and second quarter update, and now we're in our third quarter update heading into the fourth quarter. Excuse me. The budget's frequently updated online for reference and for public records requests. We find that's an effective way to interact with the community, and it brings questions to us that we're able to answer in a consistent fashion and very, very rapidly. And then we also have the municipal cost comparison that we use as a benchmark to show our progress as it relates to other communities who are providing similar services. And we're pleased to know that as we look at that cost per resident or per household, that we're very competitive and that we're providing services in a very reasonable manner. Lastly, and most importantly, we've made sure that we're prioritizing public safety, infrastructure investment, economic development, and quality of life, and I'd like to demonstrate a couple of examples of those, of how we've done that in the fiscal year '18 budget as we head into the third quarter. You know, keeping those priorities and resources front of mind, I think, is very important. There are positive results of the budget. Just in brief, you know, crime is at a five-year low, permit activity is a 10-year high. We are providing twice the resources for roadway and sidewalk repairs and doing five times the amount of work because of efficiencies. Paying attention to operations and ensuring that we're applying the correct resources in the correct manner is a lot of the reason that that's working well, and we thank you for setting those clear priorities so we know where to act and how to act. Couple graphs that are shown there that you're very familiar with. The municipal cost comparison shows us relative to other communities that provide similar services through their general fund, through their utilities, through their fire services, and we feel very comfortable with where we are with our tax base, with our revenue that we put in place for infrastructure improvement, for economic development, for quality of life. And then most recently, we've looked at where we are when we maintain roadways and when we maintain sidewalks and put together a plan schedule for addressing those, and that's the result of having additional funding and being able to do much more efficient work to accomplish what you see in that graphic over time. You know, more outcomes as a result of the fiscal year '18 budget that are not as apparent as roadways, or crime, or planning and development. You've indicated that we should start the planning and development for a senior center, for two new parks, and then for a public safety complex, and we've got those activities in motion in this year's budget, and we'll verify that we have the correct funding for fiscal year '19 and going forward in the five-year budget window. We also, you know, we have prioritized, as you've heard here tonight, or this afternoon, CHSP funding is very important. Our CHHS and affordable housing funding is very important, our COCA funding, and we've consistently seen increases in how we go about funding those and addressing community needs. We'll continue some of that discussion tonight, this afternoon, with outside agency funding. And then most recently, you know, the city's been recognized for its high-quality water, Silver Certified Bike Community, and then our bond ratings were affirmed for our general government as high AA. So again, we continuously get feedback, we evaluate that feedback against what we see operationally, and then evaluate that as compared to priorities to ensure that the resources are being used in the right manner and in the right direction. Those charts just confirm, you know, what we've talked about before. From a business, a small business perspective, the cost for services in the city is very competitive when we compare ourselves to other governments providing those same services. And as a reminder, when we do the municipal cost comparison, we have one of the lowest general fund mileage rates, along with one of the greater populations and greatest service territory that we're dealing with. And so that's important to keep in mind. So progress in fiscal year '18 is going well. Another way to evaluate that is to look at our revenues and expenditures, and we do that on a quarterly basis and report that back to the public and then to the commission in public hearings. And we're pleased to report that all 14 of the operating funds will end the year in a balanced-budget state. You may recall, as we talked in the second quarter, that as we looked at some performance metrics in certain areas, there was some monitoring to be done, particularly in Star Metro. We've evaluated their budget and their expenditures, their performance for ridership, for staffing, and feel comfortable that they will end the year in a balanced-budget state. Some of that is based on recognition of revenues from gas tax. We had typically looked at that when we had the best information available at the end of the year. We're now looking at that information and identifying and applying it during the fiscal year. That does require regular monitoring, regular understanding of where that revenue is going so that we can make adjustments as we need to. But again, we feel confident that where we are after the third quarter, that we'll balance the budget for fiscal year '18. The water and sewer funds also were areas where we were monitoring, and we're pleased to report that we expect those to end the year in a balanced-budget state. Expenditure controls are in place, final debt service numbers are available, and a good understanding of how revenues are coming in for the fund give us that confidence in looking forward. You know, and as shown in our, you know, our red to yellow to green charts, it kind of gives a perspective of what we look at in each case in each fund, because they are unique, they do have a very specific responsibility in the community. We have to provide assurances that those funds are being used for the purposes for which we planned, and we feel, after looking at those 14 funds in the third quarter, that is occurring and working well. As part of the regular updates, we do want to take advantage of the fact that we have an opportunity to make changes to the budget, and that's what's before you this afternoon, is some amendments to the budget. We are asking for a fund balancing amendment request for the Building Inspection Fund, recommending transferring $1 million from its operating fund to its reserve fund. That is a reflection of increased permitting, the revenues that are derived from that, and then the work that will need to be done in the future and be accounted for within the Building Inspections Fund on its own. Typically, we may do that at the end of the year, but as, based on what we have with confidence and where we are with performance measures, we feel it's appropriate to take that action now. There are two other procedural items where we have capital projects in electric and the sewer fund. We're asking for an increase because of new development in electric, from one master project to another, to reflect that work that's ongoing, and then a memorandum of understanding has been entered into for a sanitary sewer bypass in the Cascades Gamble, and we want to take advantage of that opportunity to make sure that funding's in place as they proceed with that construction into the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. Some other third-quarter position amendments that we're asking for your approval include some of the reorganization that we've gone through over the last three years. When we have seen services that overlap, or when consolidated could be made more efficient, we're requesting those position moves to reflect that, and that's what we're asking for with Star Metro and Fleet. There are some mechanics positions that are working for Star Metro and will continue to support that ridership and that transit operation, but consolidating them into the motor pool follows the practice of ensuring that we're efficiently providing that service to Star Metro. And then a similar situation, Gulf has a mechanics position that we're asking to transfer into Fleet, so they adhere to the standards within Fleet, but then provide the services most efficiently to the Gulf Fund. And then lastly, we've talked about maintaining positions at a certain level, commitment to evaluate what positions we have, how best to use them. In this case, the airport and the general fund have worked together to talk about a communications position that's in the airport. It's a vacant position. They are working closely with our communications staff and feel that that position can be reclassified. It will move out of the aviation fund and move into the general fund and be, allow us to continue the work that we've done with the tempo program. That's another example of where we started with some temporary wages, we had some contract costs, we evaluated the success of the program, have really seen the success of the program, and now we're acting to put a permanent position in place that, who, a person who's essentially already been successfully accomplishing that work, and this is the procedural issue to bring that position into the right fund and the right funding source. So these balanced-budget actions and the coordination by departments are very encouraging. It's a lot of communication, it's a lot of understanding of how these funds work and at what point is it appropriate to take these actions. We feel confident that with this level of communication, with this level of public involvement, that we're recommending the right changes, the fiscal year '18 budget, so that we can complete the next quarter of the fiscal year. As part of that discussion, we've coordinated, okay, what are the lessons learned from fiscal year '18? Those lessons learned then guide us in what the assumptions are and what the standards are for establishing the fiscal year '19 budget. As part of that, last month, we provided detailed operating budget results that showed balanced budgets for fiscal year '19, with the exception of having to make some decisions on outside agency funding. We had additional requests, we had increased requests, and we had some, you know, different communication with entities that had concerns about where they were being funded and how they were being funded. And so commission directed staff to, you know, to evaluate all the requests in light of CHSP, in light of COCA, in light of other city policies and directives, and then look at the contracts that we had in place, look at the deliverables that were being provided, and focus mostly on those services that complement and/or replace work that the city would otherwise have to do if those outside agencies weren't there. As a result of that review, we're recommending that in the fiscal year '19 budget, that we identify $1,017,000 for outside agency funding, and that is directed most specifically to those agencies that complement our services, the Juvenile Assessment Center, the Bethel Ready-for-Work Program, St. Francis Wildlife. Were it not for these agencies, the city would have to apply workforce or staff or, you know, an effort towards the support that they provide in the community, and that's what the recommendation entails. As part of the recommendation also, we've recognized that we need to develop a process. Instead of identifying just recurring funding, we need to gather information on a regular basis. We probably at some point need to hear from the agencies and what they're doing and how they're providing it, so we have a better understanding of that, and we'll develop that process and put it in place this summer and then have it in place for the 2020 budget process. Just in summary, we've got a schedule here that shows the outside agency direct grant funding. We were able to balance the budget by prioritizing these 25 agencies. There is one instance of new funding and some instances where there wasn't an increase in the requested funding based on consultation with the entities or within the departments in the city. We have added funding for Be The Solution, but we have asked that they consider income-based vouchers when they go about their activities, and they've agreed that that's something that they can implement as part of the voucher activity for our funding.
Based off what criteria?
Yeah, I think it's-
Are there thresholds? Are we setting them, or are we waiting to hear from them on the thresholds?
I think we're asking for feedback from them on what those thresholds would be.
I think we should, the commission should, or staff at least, should consent to them. I think the goal here is that you don't want to take resources that folks, quite frankly, individually have to spay and neuter away from folks who otherwise wouldn't have them. That's the intention.
Yeah. We'll communicate that and include that in the agreements that we develop. We looked at increases for St. Francis and Dream Center and the Oasis Center and did not include those in the budget. And then there were items that were not funded based on prior direction, the Capital City Chamber of Commerce, and then in understanding that Crime Stoppers was a non-recurring cost. We've gotten additional feedback, as you heard in the public comments, and we'll take that into consideration as we move forward in developing the budget.
On Crime Stoppers, are they not involved in the collective? Or?
They are. They are a member of the collective.
I mean, my impression was on crime-fighting methods writ large, that if there were going to be elements of that that needed to be funded, that those requests would come from you all and through your department. But I think that's the best way to approach this, rather than the one-offs, is to entrust that based off the level of coordination that's happening there, if there is an entity that is acting in support of the larger mission, that we should hear from you about what that is and what those requests look like, if they don't already show up in the general budget.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mayor, I agree with you on that, and the one thing that I didn't realize with Crime Stoppers is that they are not eligible for CHSP funding, and so that makes a difference for me as well. I didn't know that when we took that action at the last meeting. So I'd like for us to reconsider the funding for Crime Stoppers, if we can put that in the budget.
Okay. We have received a mid-year update and progress report on the prior year funding and feel comfortable that in working with law enforcement and with Crime Stoppers, that we can bring back a recommendation for September.
And just to, I'm sorry, just further codify my own comments on that, which are, in the future, I would expect it will come back through-
Yes.
...one of those other entities and not as a special request. So should the department say this is crucial and important toward the mission that we have, that will come through that department? Otherwise, we need to figure out why they either aren't eligible or what the pool looks like. I know that from some of the domestic coordinating councils, for instance, there is not a criteria yet developed within CHSP that deals with sort of coordinating bodies. That's not a, that's not an agency's function that we tend to fund. And then finally on this, I would say, any of these folks who are eligible for funding in any other pot, largely through CHSP, or through another pot that might exist under the city's control, should receive a letter that would direct them toward applying under that, that this is the final year for general budget funding, and that we would recommend that they go through those processes for funding. Obviously, a future group can decide elsewise, but one of the apprehensions I had around taking them out is that there was no conversation up until we got to this table, and I thought it would be unfair to sort of do that at this stage. I mean, I think we should forecast this, that way at least we're giving people a year's notice. That is the intention to move these things back through the established human services funding process. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. Well, I was actually, thank you for bringing that up, because that's basically what I wanted, one of the things, points I wanted to make, is that if an organization is eligible for funding somewhere else, they should just be sent to that entity. What we had to deal with at the last meeting, our conversation really was centered around all of the organizations who might come and ask for money who are not direct service providers, for example, and so can't go into CHSP. But I think we've had a great discussion, because ultimately, we're looking at these and seeing that several of these would fall under another city department and could be included in that department's budget proposal. I think that's real important. I wanted to mention that the Oasis ask is, Oasis does receive and does participate in CHSP, but in this particular case, that is for staffing for the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls specifically, and that is not eligible for CHSP funding. And the reason that they get money is that we set them up, and so obviously, they need some staffing, and this particular $20,000 from the city and then the match from the county is supposed to go to supporting that staff. So you're gonna have to look at the subtleties of the different- So you're going to have to look at the subtleties of the different asks, I'm sure. But I'm really excited about the fact that we've had this conversation. And I wanted to, you know, the speakers, when, in both cases, especially with the trust for historic preservation, I don't think you've ever seen on this commission any hesitancy. I mean, we understand the value of historic preservation, and that's proven by our actions. But the conversation included every, everybody. And we, and the need for criteria or some sort of organization, because a lot of, some of these organizations have come before us and just said, "We need money," and we said, "Yes." I mean, at commission meetings. And they all have different, one has a contract, like for example, what was the one that Keep America, Keep Tallahassee Beautiful, for example, is doing a specific task that they are contracted to do. And Crime Stoppers has a contract. And then others, you know, we never hear from. And I was interested to find out, was my understanding after your last meeting that you were going to let all these folks know that we need some sort of information on what they've been doing lately? And I was wondering how fruitful that effort was.
We have a webpage set up to receive requests. We've sent a letter to all of these agencies to let them know, here's what we've gone through in June and will be discussing in July, and what their participation could look like if they attended the meetings and then asked for certain items of information, budgetary information.
Well, you know, several of those have been passed along to us and/or even sent directly to us. But for those agencies that didn't respond to you, I think it's very important that you, well, probably to send everyone a letter that says, "All right, here's how this is going to go from now on. You're going to be put in a framework. You're going to be assigned to, if you come and make an ask, you're going to be required, you're going to be assigned to a staff person, specific staff person whose task it is to vet your ask, and then come forward to the Commission with a request." But a much more organized process than what we have now. I mean, the whole reason CHSP was set up was so that organizations weren't coming to the Commission and asking for money, because we sit up here where it's sharing of ideas or unadmitted speakers, and somebody comes in and it seems like a worthy cause, and probably is, there are a lot of worthy causes. But that compared to the vetting that the CHSP process is able to give to organizations is important. Granted, not everybody fits into that category, but those who don't need some criteria and some process also. And so I'm real pleased that we've been able to, that we've reached the dollar amount where it was just so much that something had to be done. And I'm real pleased, thank you to all the colleagues up here that have, you know, had that fruitful conversation. And I'm sure it's going to be much more organized in the future.
Can I, I mean, I appreciate those comments, Commissioner. I would, I don't think we should be getting that information brought to the Commission in ad hoc form. I think this list ought to be gone through. And if an organization does not qualify for the existing funding pools largely through the CHSP process, that the request should come through the departments that they are in support or subject to. So if it's Keep Tallahassee Leon County Beautiful, which doesn't qualify through one of the normal funding pools, then maybe Neighborhood Affairs or Parks, I forget who does some of the maintenance thing.
Beautification or-
Whatever that beautification, then they make the determination through a process that gets established that it's work that we ourselves aren't doing, but it is in pursuit of the mission of our department. And we've made the recommendation that that's what it go through. If it is in support of a crime sort of assistance effort, and we don't have a box for that, there is an organized entity that already exists to help vet through that, you all ought to be evaluating that. And I think it ought to come through your respective budget requests. A process that says, you know, we're going to put this together and we'll look at your budget and we'll bring it to the Commission is not what we, we're trying to get away from that. That's what the CHSP process did. And now we know that the hole in the process is that some of them don't fit that criteria and are worthy projects that many of us would like to fund, but at some level, it gets a little bit out of control. And I think we're approaching that place, which is what I think all of us are trying to streamline it back into something much more reasonable.
And Mr. Mayor, that is our intent, to try to direct these either to CHSP or COCA. Later tonight, you're going to be approving an RFP for a consultant to come in and evaluate the categories for the CHSP process. As part of that process, we can look at adding a coordinating council type category for future.
And if you do that, then obviously, you've got to raise the total amount going to CHSP. I wouldn't recommend that we add new categories and that the dollar amounts stay the same. So if we're $1 million here, and I would expect you then move $1 million over and create new categories for evaluation. In fact, that's probably the cleaner way to do it, rather than you all going through the budget, you know, each department, because I'm not sure that the citizens will be clear about what the front door is. How do I get Keep Tallahassee Leon Beautiful in front of Department of Neighborhood Affairs, if that is the right one? So I think your recommendation around looking at the categories may be a better one. But I think the bottom line for me is, I'm on my way out of here, but is that you don't want to have this in this format.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. As we approach September, you know, we've got the public hearings, adoption and appropriation of the fiscal year 19 budget. One of the next steps we wanted to take was to provide the detailed department by department and by funding source balanced capital budget. We've done that in the agenda item and would be glad to answer any questions you had about specific projects and/or bring back additional information. And that then would provide us with the comprehensive, you know, the operating and capital budget with the answers that we need in order to balance the budget.
So Commissioners, are there any, if I understand you correctly, any questions on the capital budget projects that we have listed here?
They do address some of the most important priorities that we have talked about. The, you know, we've got the planning and development for Parks and Recreation, for the new senior center, for the Public Safety Campus, the body worn cameras. Technology is in an area that's important for updating our interaction with the community. And so each of those items is funded and shown as balanced. We've got the roadway and sidewalk maintenance at the $6.5 million level, plus $1 million for sidewalk repairs that'll continue. And we'll be glad to answer any of those specific questions that you have about those projects. This overview mirrors those projects here, and then the specific detail is in the agenda One other aspect of bringing back regular reports is updates on where we are with hurricane recovery. We're pleased with where we are with Hurricane Hermine recovery. We estimated $14.1 million in expenditures that we enabled the system to be, systems to be brought back online for the citizens. And we've received $8.7 million in reimbursement, 61.4%. And we see that gathering steam and expect to be very close to that $14.1 million at the end of the fiscal year. Irma is moving even more rapidly. We've identified the $4.3 million, have all of the supporting documentation in for Hurricane Irma, and have already received a $457,000 appropriation for reimbursement. There's a public assistance agreement that's on the agenda this afternoon to enable us to take the next step in getting reimbursement for Hurricane Irma. And then, as you all know, most recently in the news and previously in other disasters, we've responded with mutual aid. And we're pleased to report that in our accounting system, when we track our costs, that we're being reimbursed by FEMA for those costs. In other cases, when we are asked to respond to support a community such as the East Point Community, we respond and track those costs. But it may be something that, you know, we'll have to wait to see if there's a disaster declaration before we can make a decision on recovery. Some of the next steps that we have in going through the budget process, you took the early step of verifying the 4.1 millage rate for the city and the 1-mill rate for the Downtown Improvement Authority. We have scheduled public hearings on September 12th and 26th and at 6:00 PM in the Commission workshops, where we'll take public comment and go through the required steps by law to adopt and then appropriate a fiscal year 19 budget. One aspect of that that we'll bring to you for the first time is healthcare rates. We've gotten a draft rates. We've asked some questions. The city committee is meeting, and we'll bring back final healthcare rates for inclusion in the fiscal year 19 budget. And then complimentary to this process also, we're, have confidence that the electric and gas rate study is moving forward. The general feeling is that, you know, we recognize that we've implemented infrastructure improvements. Those infrastructure improvements have been through long-term debt, debt service. That's going to increase the base rate, but we also see then there are some savings as a result of fuel based on the modernization of that fleet. And we expect, and the final results will be back in September, that we'll be able to show lower bills for, as a result of that rate study.
That's great.
Again, an early idea of that, but we'll talk about that September 12th and 26th as we go through the public hearings for the fiscal year 19 budget. We'd ask if you'd approve amendments, accept the third quarter update, and be glad, staff is here to answer any questions that you may have about the budget process.
Second.
Commissioner, there is a motion in a second, Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, just a very good question. Robert, what is the, what is the status of our deficiencies fund at this point?
The status of the deficiencies fund is good. It's in balance. So we have, the fiscal year 18 amount was, it was fully funded for that, for that amount. When we go into fiscal year 19, we had about a 3% increase in our general fund budget. We'll compare the deficiencies fund against that final appropriated budget, and I expect that that will be fully funded also.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, follow by Miller.
Just briefly, I know that this has already been discussed earlier, but the moving of the marketing position from the airport to Tempo, I understand the need for that in this budget. But if we can continue to try to identify grant funding, I would especially think that Tempo would be something suitable for grant funding in a position. The marketing position in the airport, in my opinion, is needed if we're going to continue to try to get lower fares and more air service out of the airport. There's not, there's not a staff person that is designated to do that job. So you have the airport director, who's, the lion's share of the airport director's job is to make sure that the airport runs well, that is often tasked with this, and that's too much for one person to do. A lot of that extra work has fallen on me. But I think, I think a professional person in that position is something that is needed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, I was interested, and I really, I think this might have been what may have prompted Commissioner Richardson's question about the deficiencies fund. In our FY '18, we had determined that we were going to fund the deficiencies fund, and then we were going to take $500,000 toward affordable housing. So are we, is that still our plan for FY '18?
Yes, it is. We use the deficiencies fund as a fallback position for that $500,000. We do expect that we will have real estate sales that normally would accrue to that deficiencies fund. We'll identify that and target that towards the affordable housing. And then any balance that we have at the end of the year out of the general fund will also supplement that. And then the backup would be the deficiencies.
My other question was that on the, did you get Commissioner Ziffer's? My other question was, the standard sold, did that sell in FY '17 or FY '18?
Commissioner, I believe that closed this year.
It's not listed.
So you're speaking of the sale of the standard property on Macombe. I believe that closed this year. We would recognize those dollars this year. So to answer your question, we would take those dollars at the end of the year and appropriate them based on the financing policy of the city. They would first go to the deficiencies fund, and Robert said that's full. So we'll have enough money to fully fund the deficiencies fund. I would fully expect to fund the Affordable Housing Commitment that the Commission made and some extra money, which we discussed at the last workshop, that would essentially be used for a rainy day fund in the event that the Homestead Exemption Amendment is passed that would impact us in fiscal year 2020.
Actually, we had designated that sales money to go specifically to Fringetown, not to the deficiencies fund.
I stand corrected. Thank you, ma'am. You're correct. And that would be directed, that's correct.
All right. I just want to make sure.
Generally speaking, those real estate sales, we would follow the methodology I just described. Thank you.
But if it did, it did close this year, I just, it wasn't on the list.
I just received a nod that it was closed this year. So that-
Commissioner Ziffer.
I just wanted to briefly, since this is the last time I'll be doing this, after nine cycles of this, the last several have been much easier because we've started much sooner. And I want to congratulate the staff for keeping us so informed and starting early, and the process is so much more thorough. And I will tell you, for those of us that have been here for a while, far more pleasurable because it was never a very good idea before this meeting, about three days out, to get a book about this thick with instructions for us to find out what was wrong in the budget, how we needed to fix it, and where we wanted monies to go. It was just impossible. So this process is much better. I want to thank all of you for your hard work.
Could I reiterate that?
Please.
You know, the year I ran for office, I got the budget when it came out, which was on a Tuesday afternoon, and the budget hearing was on Thursday morning at 9:00. And I don't know how Commissioners did that, much less the public. And this is so much different. It is, well, first of all, it's incredibly easier because we are constantly involved. We don't sign off on it on the end of September and then never think about it again until August of the following year on Friday, so we can read it over the weekend. And so I, you all have done an absolutely phenomenal job of responding, not only to our needs to have this done differently, this process changed, but also the public's demands that it be changed too. So I cannot, I, people, you know, forget how things were done in the past. And a friend of mine has this saying that things are the way they are for a reason. This is the way it is now for a reason. And so we're going to get a new commission who's going to come in and think, "Oh, yeah, this is great. We can do this." And not knowing that over the last eight years, there's been so much time and attention spent just trying to get it to the point where it was a manageable task. So thank you.
You're here. Other questions, comments? Staff, we have a motion in a second to approve staff recommendations with Commission adjustments on this interim report. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business before this group? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.